Yeah, I've got all the others. I've only got one of those. I've got all the others.
It should have been, but I've got them.
I put one through your door.
Did you?
Yes.
I think you asked me about it.
Now, these are the... May we make a start, please? Sure. And presumably the same apologies.
That's it. So councillor Young, who has hospital prevent, we have one vacancy and councillor Austin is going to be excusing herself in about an hour.
Hopefully it will be alright. Any declarations of interest? The minutes of the previous meeting, are they accepted or objected to? You propose to accept it? Are seconded? All in favour? Right. And now the neighbourhood plan, which the town clerk is going to give us a little report on.
So version three of the neighbourhood plan, you haven't actually seen versions one and two. Those are versions one and two that the working group has, there's been some work, there's been some tweaks, there's been some more work. But we think, the group, we now think we're at the point that it's ready to go for screening review by Thannet District Council and this is not necessarily, the final report, but screening review is an activity where TDC will check that the plan does not breach and is otherwise compatible with EU obligations. And we also inform if there's possibly environmental surveys or particularly survey work that we all need to bring in. So it's giving TDC that first look through to say, and for them to flag up, no, you absolutely can't do this, or if you want to do that, you're going to have to get a specific survey undertaken. That is, that is where this plan is at at the moment. It is missing some maps at the moment, which TDC are going to provide. Local green spaces for designation and text for chapter two. At this, at this meeting, you're asked to note the version before you. Also, there's the professional that's been brought in. Mr Chekwin suggested that we have an online meeting with him because he can actually much better explain what you're looking at and where we are in the process and what the next steps are. So if members were receptive to such a meeting, because it is actually going to need to be the council that submits this report to TDC. And then at September's committee meeting, there will hopefully be that version four, ready for sign off for TDC to have a look at for the screening review. One thing that's kind of become apparent when I've been attending meetings is the neighbourhood plan can, can address and cover an absolute huge amount of things and this first plan is going to be focused around conservation areas. And that is really driven by actually the volunteers who've been working on it. This is what they're interested in. It doesn't necessarily mean that in the future, the plan can't encompass different things, but the people who've been doing the legwork on it, this is where, where their interests lies at the moment.
Well, sorry, councillor Green.
In my opinion, it's nowhere near ready to submit to TDC, even for a screen. This council has declared a climate emergency and yet there are virtually no concrete proposals that reflect that, I don't think. I think before it goes to TDC, this council needs to look at it and I welcome the, the offer from the expert to wait with us in whatever way so that we can discuss in detail. To me, it's very bland. It could have been written about almost any historic town. And there are some omissions. For instance, St Lawrence High Street is not listed as a local shopping.
Oh, it was. It must have gone off.
Sorry, councillor Austin.
I was going to say, I'm inclined to agree with this councillor Green. I don't think we're ready to submit it and I am very concerned about the climate aspects. I've kept pushing on the 20 mile per hour and some of the other things, but there's still a big chunk I think that needs to go in there. And I do think that we do need to make sure that this is a relevant plan for the whole of Ramsgate. I don't think it's appropriate for it just to be about the conservation area, although obviously there are some particularly important considerations for the conservation area. But if we could get, for example, somebody from the climate change working with, not a member of this council, to be part of the neighbourhood plan group and help us with that aspect, for example, that would be extremely welcome. It's ended up being a very tiny number of people involved in doing this and it's very difficult to progress.
Councillor Austin.
So what would be better? Would it be better to have a meeting with this gentleman so that he can explain to him so that we can understand it fully and then go away and take on board the points that people suggest? Or have a meeting ourselves and look at it and go, why haven't they done this and that and the other? Effectively confuse ourselves, but also acquaint ourselves with it and then have a meeting having prepared questions because we've looked at it previously? What would be the, the better way around to do this? Because I think we ought to be seeing it sooner rather than later, don't we?
Yes. I would thought so, councillor.
I, I think we should, we should meet this gentleman and see what he's got to say before we go.
It's interesting. To see him first?
Yeah.
And that's where I'm going as well, because I want to hear from him, what, what we need to have ready to be able to submit. Because he's the expert, isn't he? And so I'm sort of like inclined to listen to him first rather than us just participate about stuff.
That way, otherwise it's...
Exactly.
Okay, councillor Austin.
Having him available has made a really big difference. He's very straightforward and common sense.
Good, good.
And he's the person who wrote quite a bit of the guidance and so on for neighbourhoods. So he really knows what he's talking about, but he, he talks about it in long jargon language, doesn't he?
I have a... Sooner the better then, quite honestly.
I think, so it's, it's much needed.
Yes.
Okay, so are we proposing that as soon as possible, you're proposing, set up a meeting with Doug Chekwin?
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favour? Non-nas, ASAP, before we go any further, wouldn't you? What is not?
Even within conservation areas, other places, for example Kensington, are making it much easier for residents to make changes to their buildings to fit in with the climate change agenda. Changes about water conservation, even double glazed windows within conservation areas. And that's something that I think we should be pushing.
Leading on.
Yeah.
And there is a complete document produced by a national body that tells you what you can and can't do and we should be looking at those things and following it all through.
But they're trying to avoid people having to go to the hard worked heritage officer at the district council, which they would be charged for, to do those things.
I would also like to say thank you to the people that have been with us for a very long time. I don't think it's an easy job.
It's standard.
Certainly is. Okay, so we've decided to go to speak there. Do you think we've, via Zoom, so I think we've proposed and seconded, I don't think we've had a...
We did.
We had a vote. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, yes. It's all right. I don't always know what's going on either. And, okay, can we leave that in despair really? And go on to this consultation on short term lets? How are you, David? Oh, councillor Green?
I'm sorry?
This short term let, N A O S O. No, it's nothing to do with...
Now, it was a consultation that came in from Kent Association of Local Councils to all members. I sent it on to the councillors to say that if people were meant, wanted to consider it on an agenda, I would put it on an agenda.
Well, if we could have a short discussion, the councillor would...
Thank you, Chair. I'm just, I think one of the things that affects really badly is the lack of, it's a lack of housing. And I've just written to the MP to mention to that, I'm going to detail. Because it is issues like the B and Bs which are uncontrolled, which will take over properties that were previously let for our residents and I think there has to be control and I think that's something that we should be pushing, we should write to in response to this consultation and make that comment. That's certainly something that I would... I mean, obviously, as I've heard you say, we've always had short let buildings, but they gradually changed the way that it's, that it's happening. And they're not like B and Bs we used to have where we evolved and it closed down for the winter. Now we've got a continual, continued changeover. And certainly when I was in Ashburn, over was a house opposite me, you know, and it was just full of different people every week. Not that it caused it a problem, but that was a house that used to be rented for a family. So all those are restricting now our chances of getting our own, our own Ramsgate residents housed should it be necessary. So that's just a comment I wanted to make.
And I totally agree with that. Oh, yes, I'd like to say something, yes. I would totally agree with what, yeah, I almost got to say. I mean, you know, certainly Airbnbs do bring a lot of money to the town. They bring some good things to the town and people are using restaurants, they're using up facilities, etc. But where I live, Liverpool Lawn, there are six, seven Airbnbs of the houses on Liverpool Lawn. Now, that's okay and some of their people stay there, but those are the houses that are not occupied in the winter and they are houses that, you know, people cannot live in. So we are kind of, our housing stock is diminishing in a way as a result of the Airbnb situation. You look at Spencer Square, two houses there, the two houses that have recently been bought are going to Airbnbs.
Councillor Green.
I think the Airbnbs, I mean, like Steve said, we, we're a seaside town and we don't have enough accommodation basically, so we've always had this. But it seems to me Airbnbs were renting a room out in your house and it's moved on to something, a whole, a whole, a whole different ballgame where it's not a level playing field. And the knock on, apart from what everybody else has said, Airbnbs do not pay council tax. So I can't remember when we were at a meeting where it was something like 13,000 Airbnbs presently. I don't know whether that fact is, is correct, but it was a significant number of Airbnbs in the area, all of which are not contributing to their council tax.
Sorry, they don't pay?
They don't pay council tax.
How do they not pay?
They don't pay council tax.
How do they?
They're ineligible because they're a business.
Okay.
So there's a loophole there. That's what I've been told by somebody who has an Airbnb and has told me she doesn't pay council tax, which is why they don't know access to our bin service. They need their own commercial waste and very few of them actually have their own commercial waste. And then you compare that to the, the, the B and Bs, a place like the Full Staff who's trying to keep, keep a flow and on Addington Street again, we've got four or five. But also it's, it's, it's sort of, it's not contributing to our communities. Our communities are sort of being decimated because we've got these empty properties with people that don't actually contribute to the community in terms of getting on with their neighbours, cleaning streets, you know, gardening, the whole thing, the whole thing about living next door to people and getting on with people is just completely gone if you've got Airbnbs. So we, we actually, there are some councils that have introduced bylaws. Now, I don't know at what level you need to be, whether you've got to be a unitary authority to actually put these bylaws in, so whether it's a role for TDC or KCC. But certainly I think as a council, we, we should be trying to pursue where bylaws have been created to actually restrict or make them pay their way, to put people off really having Airbnbs. And whether we need to push KCC or TDC to actually enact some sort of bylaw. I mean, certainly they need to be contributing to council tax. And it was, I think it was, it was thousands of Airbnbs we've presently got in Thannet not paying, not contributing to the council.
So, Austin.
There was a motion at TDC, wasn't there, raised by councillor Yates, which didn't...
Which fell?
Which fell.
Because of, in terms of some of the opposition parties?
Yes.
Because they have interest in Airbnbs?
And because of the difficulty, I think, of balancing up. Yes, we're a tourist town, we need this, but on the other hand, we, we need accommodations.
I mentioned some interest, I think.
Very possibly. One of the things I was going to pick up on with my litter forum hat on was the point that councillor Wing made about litter, because one of the problems that we had was that the new subject, they, these Airbnbs, as I understand it, are not required to have commercial bins and therefore our bins on the seafront, etc., get filled with little carrier bags from somebody who's leaving an Airbnb and they need to find a place to put their waste and it ends up in a public, and that's why they get so full.
Even if it is collected, they're not there on the right day.
Exactly, exactly. So that is a big contributory factor to why our, our bins in the town, in the seafront and whatever, get so full. And there has to be surely a practical way to sort that problem out because otherwise litter is the thing that residents complain about the most. It's the thing that puts visitors off the most. So it is, there's got to be something that can do about that.
Very clear.
I'd just like to counter what was said. I, I mean, I would, I don't want to say that, that the Tory party have a commercial interest because I know friends who vote red and green who have Airbnbs. Some of them are my, some of them are my friends, but I don't, I mean, I don't think we should get into that because we're making judgements about people. But what I think needs to happen and what Jill Bayford explained quite well in her response to that motion was that we don't have yet the powers to, TDC didn't have the powers to tackle the Airbnb issue and that's what I'm suggesting we could do, or we return another motion for TD councillors to TDC to try and establish, well, work out who is responsible for the bylaws. Is it TDC? Is it KCC? If it's TD, if it's KCC, then there's absolutely no point in us going to TDC. So that, I don't know enough about who would be responsible for the bylaws. All I know is they have been...
Councillor Hudson is trying to say something.
Perhaps we're more ahead here.
It was you first. It's all right, go ahead.
Question nine, I can answer all these for you if you want. Yes, potentially perhaps question nine, what could the city do? Number five, develop the licensing scheme with physical checks and premises and that be carried out by TDC, that would be the right way to do it?
Same.
Yeah, the council could do that.
They're saying they, they haven't got enough people to do it. They probably haven't.
No.
But it can have much...
It should be the planning.
Yeah.
Get that sorted out.
Which is what the law, even if you haven't got to do it.
Sorry, councillor Moore.
All right. It's going back a little bit. I believe you said that Airbnbs don't pay council tax because they're a business.
They're not a business, are they?
No. Or they pay visitors rates?
They don't pay visitors.
They are a business, under the law.
A business, why don't they pay business rates if they don't have to pay council tax?
I think they come between the two and they don't have to have commercial bins.
I think, I think the top and bottom of it is...
They have to do municipal tax.
Council houses being built by the council.
Yeah, yeah. Councillor Orville.
Can I, can I just say that the, well, I'm going to just say, that the, I know the government are looking at Airbnbs at the present time. They've made that, that clear that it does need to be reformed. I think what we should do as RTC is to write to our MP and to, whether or not, but that's the way, that's the best way of doing it.
Yes.
And we need to hold our MP to account and ask him to raise the issue in Parliament and, but we need to come up with a formed letter that will go with the, with the questions that we have and, and I think that we should, we should do that.
I mean, there's also, first, the second homes as well, which I'm not sure how many there are in Ramsgate. I personally know two lots. And other places are trying to, like Wales, trouble the rates.
Yes, you've got to 200%.
But they pay double here, don't they?
Do those properties do? Empty properties pay double? I didn't hear that. Councillor Hudson.
Empty properties in Thannet have a 300% extra council tax.
300, I would choose.
300%, which is about eight grand per year.
Empty property, but not second home?
Second homes, I think we had this conversation, 100, 100% extra.
Right, so they're 200. The other thing I'd quite like to know on the wider thing is when they do these housing developments, they're supposed to have so many houses at social rent. Do they? I mean, because rumor has it, they don't.
It's a myth.
Yes.
Affordable housing doesn't mean affordable housing.
But there's affordable housing, social housing.
Yeah, social housing is affordable housing, but the affordable housing on, mostly on private elements is not for councils, not for council tenants.
Thank you. Yes, they should pay 30%, but what happens then?
Sorry? They should 30%.
You're talking about affordable housing.
Affordable housing. But they say, I can't afford it. Now, anybody can get an accountant to work the money out to say, no, they can't afford to pay these 30%. Because we had someone offered 10 and we said no. Then we came back and offered 15.
For what?
17%. 15% social housing.
Oh, yes.
And they said, we said no again. And we were told that you had to pass it because it'd go to appeal. And obviously it was going to go to appeal, but I think we have to stand there and we have to fight it. We can't just say, yes, all right, then you go ahead. We've got to fight what is wrong and this is wrong.
Well, Chair, can I just respond to councillor Hudson? Right in what she's, she's saying, but the facts of the matter are that the government has put leeway in planning law for affordable housing and they say if the development area, the place that they, that they want to build on cannot support 30% affordable housing as we require in our local plan, then they can put in less. That is what we lost the appeal on at Nash Lane, the big development there, when the planning inspector for the government said it can be less, they can take it for less because the site couldn't be developed with, it doesn't make a profit, it doesn't make the profit on that. So I think the changes that are necessary are at government level, not local town. And so it's the government that has to make the changes to ensure that the housing provided for, and that includes exactly what councillor Hudson said.
That's what I was going to say.
This is part of the thing I've just written to McKinley about is, don't respond to me, oh, we provide affordable housing. Well, I'm afraid the majority of our residents in Ramsgate cannot afford the affordable housing because their wages ain't high enough. So I think that that's, that's the issue that we need to, we need to galvanise our MP.
Yeah, I mean, we're going wider.
Who's going to respond to the consultation?
Yes, who's? There's a whole list of questions.
As I say, would you like me to go through all the questions or possibly members would like to identify a few salient points and I'll try and put them in the right, relevant places?
It'd be quite quick to go through, wouldn't it, now?
I think so.
Right. Do you consider the increase in short term and holiday letting in England to have had an adverse consequence in the housing market? Yes, it's a major problem. Anyone object to that? No. This is not very democratic, but anyway.
It is most of...
Yes, but it is democratic.
Do you consider noise, antisocial or the nuisance behaviour severe problem?
Actually, I think these are heading the question below.
That was the...
I think noise, of course.
Right, but noise, yes.
In general.
I think it depends where you are.
Yeah.
If you're in town.
Right, because a lot of...
Is it a middle road thing?
It's a minor problem.
I'd say minor problem, yeah.
Okay, we could say yes, but this is only a minor problem. Is that all right?
We say minor, but you could say it's restricted to maybe the coastal certain areas where it's more densely, or yes.
I don't know about providing the evidence to this. Impact on local communities and residents. Aside from the impacts on housing and incidents of antisocial, blah, blah, do you consider it to have had other adverse effects on local communities and residents?
Rubbish. Government accounts the loss of revenue.
Community.
Impacting on services and communities.
Neighborhoods and communities. Yeah.
So local residents can't find somewhere to rent.
Community.
Local residents can't find anywhere to rent because all the rents have gone up.
In community culture.
Yes, it inflects, inflects rents, sorry.
Surely the people that are employed to clean up can't be tenants. Take the rubbish and put it in their normal bins, don't they?
No, they don't.
No, they don't. Just dump it.
They shouldn't be doing that either.
No, they shouldn't.
Commercial waste.
No, they shouldn't.
They dump it in public bins. A lot of it goes on Spencer Square, in Spencer Square, in bins on the front.
Yeah. We had an episode of Obviously Dust in the High Street. It was all over the pavement and I managed to get the name of the landlord who I phoned up and harangued and he did come out and clear it up. But yes, it is a... So there's lots of reasons, lots of other reasons, yes, is the answer to that one.
Lots of revenues, a big one, because I'm sure it was, it was thousands of Airbnbs that were not paying the council tax.
Let's romp through this, shall we, question nine?
Right, potential impacts, which do you consider to be the most appropriate form of response?
Five.
A licensing scheme with physical checks.
A licensing scheme with physical checks?
Yes.
Yes, because I think otherwise they'll just ignore it.
Funded by a surcharge.
But yes, they've got to pay.
The cost of the licence.
Yeah, funded by the cost of the licence, which should be equal to council tax for a property of that size.
Well, it should pay council tax as well.
Should do, really.
Yeah. And supplement, oh, what do you consider to be the costs and associated burdens of these options? Who would bear the costs and how might they be mitigated? So we've sort of answered that, that they, that they should pay council tax.
The owners.
And the licence fee.
The owners.
Yeah, the owners should, yes, obviously the people that get the money.
Which would be tax deductible.
I don't think.
They would be because they, they must put, they must put, they must declare their earnings. They can't not declare your earnings.
No, no, you declare your earnings, but I'm not sure that your expenses can be...
Well, your licence definitely would be, maybe not your account.
There is selective licensing that TDC do in Margate, which has been very successful. They've targeted landlords and they have to be within this registration scheme so their payment should be within it, otherwise they can't rent back their homes.
Okay, so why have they got it in Margate?
It's going to be rolled out to Ramsgate.
Right, okay.
Problem with H Margate, that was the...
Does anyone have any interest in being part of the registrational monitoring process for short term? Well, that's a separate issue, isn't it? So have we got some answers? So I think we're proposing to write to our MP saying that we want some control, control over Airbnb and we've given the reasons. And we would also like to follow up the housing development.
Well, I think that's a separate issue.
I know, but may not be due to the shortage of housing in...
We can put that in the letter.
Yeah.
That can be done and I'm happy, if the town clerk's happy with the... I'll, I'll do the letter on behalf of the council with the town clerk form and send it around for members to, where it goes out for comment and inclusion.
Thank you, councillor Green. Yeah.
I don't see why it shouldn't go to KCC and TDC as well.
I agree, actually.
But why not send it to the leader of Thannet District Council and the leader of KCC? I didn't do that.
Is that proposed, then?
Proposed, yeah.
Yes, I'm ready. Yes, I'm ready, seconded, all those in favour? Right, okay.
And consultation as opposed to the consultation.
Now.
It might, it will be out soon.
Yeah.
Can you send it anywhere, back or front?
One way or the other.
At initial, initial at bottom and then.
And in the back page.
Yeah.
It's on each page of the.
Is this?
I just initial the, initial the front and sign the last, initial each page and then just sign the last one.
And have they been, because actually these all came to a meeting and were approved by yourself, uh, when you were chair.
It's all, all I saw was Catherine Exu's chair on, on.
But no, when they were actually approved as accurate, it was when you were chair.
Oh, okay, I'll have a look back then.
There you go, that's safe to do, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
No worries, cheers.
This is not one I'm thinking of. I thought this was no chat, oh, yeah, comes out.
It's H M O.
Oh, yes. Um, well, first of all, there's a whole principle of H M Os.
Yeah, it's another one, yeah.
But if you look at the floor plan.
Include a bit at the back.
But they're putting two stories at the back, which means that the back room, which comes the middle room, and it hasn't got any windows.
Has no natural light.
No, so that's existing, isn't it?
Yeah, that's what exists.
Yeah, so. So those middle rooms don't have a window.
I know.
Which I am gobsmacked.
I thought they had to have.
I thought it had to have.
Haven't you looked at something before where they didn't have natural?
Yeah.
And made the same comment?
Yes.
I, I assume.
My architect said I couldn't do this in my house because of the lack of natural light.
But there's also, because I researched it a bit, apparently they like to have windows, the fire brigade like to have windows. So if you're on fire, they can get you out.
Not just the fire brigades, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I suppose we.
Um, we object on, on the grounds of, is that H M O end of?
It's an H M O.
Yes.
It's, there's a lack of natural light, we're concerned about the safety of residents.
Yes.
Overdevelopment.
Yes.
Overdevelopment of a, of a.
Write it all down, town clerk.
She's scribbling as fast as she can.
Chair, I think you've got to say something a bit more than it's an H M O.
No, no, we're saying that it's, they are, aren't they?
It's overdeveloped.
Overdeveloped, natural light.
No, I meant you can't just say we object because it's an H M O. You've got to say the area of the condition isn't suitable.
Is, well, is there an assumption, is there an assumption against H M Os?
No, no.
Planning.
The only place that, it's, sorry.
Yes.
Chair, the only place that there is is in Cliftonville.
Oh, right, yeah.
And you would need to get, I've already raised this about trying to get one for Ramsgate, certainly, town centre. Um, the answer to that was no, they have to go through the local plan process.
Okay.
And, um, and don't forget that if there is no other H M O within a hundred metres of this, then unless there is something like you just pointed out about the no natural light coming in or wherever that that may be, then that is a point, that is a point you can make, and Dave, Councillor Green's absolutely right in what he's just saying.
Yes, it, it depends on, on the proximity of the next H M O, is this not right? And we are not fair of where all the H M Os are.
No, 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 no.
Yeah. Um, so we're objecting there to go from the grounds of overdevelopment and.
Which has resulted in.
Lack, uh, lack of natural daylight.
And ventilation.
And ventilation in, in bedrooms. And we have concerns about the safety of residents.
Yes.
As a result of.
Recommend reduce the number of rooms.
Yeah.
Well, it's that, that extension that's caused it, yes.
Can I just ask if there is, um, who out of that lot has access to the rear? Is there, um, you know, we're talking bin storage here as well?
There are bins.
There's another, there are bin store on there.
The bay road is at the front, everybody puts their bins out.
Um, it might, is it down in the basement?
It looks like a courtyard area, but.
But that's what I'm saying, if it's in the courtyard, it has got access.
That's.
I think you just make the point to ensure that access is available to everybody if it's approved.
I think it is, by the look, I know it, through the, through the ground floor, kitchen, living room.
The back though, you can't see the back window.
Yeah.
But you can get it at the front as well at the basement. Um.
Yes, we're talking bin storage, aren't we?
Yeah, but maybe that's where it goes.
Well.
But they haven't labelled it, you know.
It has to be clear as to where it goes.
Exactly.
Not just it might go here or it might go there.
Exactly.
If there's a bin store on there, then if, if it's not shown and everybody's not, and everybody's got, not got access to that bin store, then what is going to happen?
And that's another concern, yeah.
Yes. So we object on the basis of.
Bin storage.
No bin storage.
Overdevelopment, rooms without.
Natural light.
Natural ventilation.
Or is.
Or lack of the bin store.
Lack of bin storage and, uh, yeah.
Additional method of escape.
Escape.
If the door's on fire, so.
Emergency.
If you're in that bedroom and there's a fire in the corridor, how do you get out?
We should be able to attend, shouldn't we, a map of H M O?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Legal ones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The hospital, yeah, we can, hospital one, hospital one.
Because I know there are two very close together, right?
Is that something that, you're okay with that? We could have it for the next planning meeting, couldn't we?
That's to make a point that all H, all H M Os are badly run, I know what's not very well run. And they have to have a licence, they are inspected by the council. So, you know, to say, no, and it isn't a planning, that isn't a planning issue.
Yes.
An H M O.
They have a production, well, that's the other bed, every bedroom to have its own bathroom.
Yeah. If, I, I, those seem to be quite generous rooms, and if it wasn't for the fact that that landlocked central bedroom.
Yeah.
It, it probably would be okay.
Let's look for our neighbourhood plan.
Yes.
Are we voting on this?
Yes, have we got, um, a proposal, our proposal is a second up. Yes, Councillor Heatham, in favour? Yeah.
Over there.
Okay. So Barmore garage, the long place.
Let's just have a look at it.
Yeah. The Ramsgate Heritage and Design Forum have been quite scathing.
Chair, can I, I, I pulled this in, I, I pulled this in, um, because obviously where, where this is located, I was concerned about the effect that it might have on, I mean, the old garage that's there is dilapidated and has been for some years and been entered for a long time. Um, so it is probably the right place to build a house, but it's got to fit in with the rest of the town because it's the very narrow.
It's a tiny.
Sure thing. Yeah, there you go. Yeah.
Should be listed.
Chair, it's at the, chair, it's at the end of a street, so.
It is listed, yeah.
It's dead, it's dead end, right.
So at the top there, you've got all the existing elevations.
Yeah.
I'm looking at it.
So they're keeping the same shape and format.
Yeah, can we blow it out a little bit? I've got my glasses on, sorry.
Oh, I can't.
Darn.
So you've got the existing ground floor plan and then the post-ground floor and then first one.
Can you point out what, how it's two dwellings?
So the first unit is accessed through transferory.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's that first little notch.
Yeah.
And then the, uh, through Barmore place.
Oh, I see, it's from the back.
So it's two flats?
Two.
Hmm.
I, I mean, my view, which I think it's okay for, in principle for.
I think it's a good use of this space.
It's a great thing, and that.
I think that's.
I do agree, I do agree with the, uh, Ramsgate Heritage and Design Forum, I think is, uh, they, they could come with.
The appearance of it, I mean, there's beautiful streets, there's church, there's a big research. It's a shame to have something.
I, I think.
Out of keeping.
Personally, I would say, uh, the design is.
Pedestrian.
And would ask for, ask for the TDC to get a better design, but obviously we did, we've got to deal with, with what we've got. If they can make it any, any better under current cir- circumstances. Um, but the principle of de- development there is, is fine.
Hmm.
That would be fine.
You're going to propose that? I'd second that.
Oh.
Councillor Hudson, all those in favour?
I've heard it.
Concerned about the impact on the streets.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you pay them.
Concerned about the impact on the street, really. Then the next one is very interesting.
Hmm.
Oh, yes, that was, yeah, I didn't realise it until it's on the, on the Thannan news.
Hmm, it's on there.
Yeah.
It's been quite a lot, really.
I've got a comment on that.
I want to comment.
Hmm.
Yes. Most of the shops on the ground floor have been given two weeks' notice to get it out. The Scandinavian shop and the furniture shop and the dance studio have not been given notice, but they know about it, I'm trying to get to the bottom of that.
Right.
Um, to me, it seems a bit of a shame, it's not my favourite building in the world, but there are other parts of Ramsgate that could do with being demolished and rebuilt. Um, the.
These owners are obviously willing to spend money on it where others aren't.
Yeah.
I suppose.
The positives about it are that they're planning on keeping retail units downstairs and that there's going to be accommodation, both of those are good. But the number of flats and the fact that they're all one-bedroom flats worries.
Well, they're not only one-bedroom, they, there's some, I did actually check room size, they're eight point six square metres. You need ten square metres for a double bedroom, so they're single.
They're single per flat. And of course, that's one of the things we're short of, isn't it, but.
Yeah, uh, sorry, Councillor.
Same.
I, I.
Hang on.
Sorry, it's, sorry, I was, I was, I was reading.
I'm at change legislation, there's now discussion nationally about not demolishing buildings.
Yes.
Because it creates sort of pollution.
Yes.
Carbon emissions. There's a very famous case in central London now, I think it's, it's one of the large department stores in Oxford Street, and I think it's M and S.
Oxford, isn't it?
They want to get rid of it and build something else.
Absolutely.
So that's something, you know, that's.
That is, yeah.
That is the thing, we shouldn't be demolishing buildings.
Yeah.
If we're serious about revitalising our high street, and I think we are, we've got to support this.
I, I, I think personally it is, if they took two flats out of.
Because it's too many flats.
They, it would be a much more reasonable.
Councillor Moore, thank you. Uh, it did say that they're going to make the shops smaller and older, but where is the parking?
At the moment, there are ten car parking spaces at the back, at Authority Gardens Square, Meeting Street, but they're gone. And talking to the Danish owner of the Scandinavian furniture shop, he, he's particularly worried about that. And also the, which is to do what Councillor Huxley was saying, the disruption it's going to cause with a big, quite a big development in the town.
Do you mean the parking spaces have been taken by this development?
Sorry?
Do you mean the parking spaces?
Yes.
Been taken by this place? Well, that could be an issue.
Could close the road off while they're building. Uh, yeah.
Uh, Chair, I, I, just to come back on this thing about the parking spaces, are they, they're private parking spaces? I guess for the shops, are they? It's not a public parking space, is it?
Um, no, they're for the shops. And they can also, um, the pilgrims hospice, for example, has got a big loading bay and everything at the back.
My understanding is that in a, if such a development like this was to take place, then, uh, parking issues do not come into fact. Um, and they don't come into account because I, 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 I do have to say, um, I quite like it. Um, but I have a concern of thirty four one-bedroom flats. I think by all means, we do need one-bedroom flats for people to be able to rent and afford. Um, you know, because not everybody's got a family, or people on their own and whatever, and that, that they need one, or even a couple, that can afford a one-bedroom flat for rent or whatever it may be. Um, but I certainly think thirty four is too many.
Yeah.
I think if they could recreate and put some of them more, because, I think, what is it? Um, what, they've got four two-bedroom, why only four?
Yeah.
So there you can get a family, you get family in there. So, um, so I think, I, I, whilst, again, in principle, your design, I like, I like that, I like the impact of it.
Such things.
Does fit in.
Much better than what's there, there now, you're still keeping the shop fronts, you're going to have a new shop front sitting there, so that can be dealt with under the design guide of, uh, shop fronts. Um, and but it's that particular point, so personally, I will go for affordable development, but with a reduction in the one, in the one bedroom flats.
Better balance, better balance of flats.
Yeah, better balance.
Councillor Wayne, uh, I, I'm in agreement, I, I think to have, they need to knock four flats off and they need a better mix of, uh, flats. We don't want to, you know, there needs to be a better balance.
We do need one-bedroom.
But there should be one, they should.
One-bedroom.
That can be.
Double bedroom, yes.
Yeah, double bedroom, and there should be within that block a better mix so that you've got, you've got single people, single people living by themselves, single people living with somebody, plus maybe family groups.
They do claim to have an outdoor play area. There you go.
I'm in agreement, obviously with what's been said before, but I see this going through whether we like it or not. What we have to do, as, as been suggested, is, is say how we'd like it to be changed for it to go through and for us to be really happy about it. And therefore, I would propose that we are in agreement that it would create a better ambience in that part of the town and the look is far more in keeping, however, we would like to see, and then list our, you know, less, less bedrooms, more double beds, et cetera, and push, and push more, because let's face it, they're pushing for whatever we can get, so if we do that too, you know, and then we'll come to.
They, they will always go for more.
Yes.
Yeah.
To be not.
So that's my proposal, is that we say, yes, in principle, and then I'll, I'll let the floor go for what you want on that.
No, I just, I was going to say, oh, your proposal, I, yeah, so, yeah.
No, I think.
When I say the bin stories.
Uh, there is quite substantial bin storage actually.
Have to be.
Yeah.
With that a lot, wouldn't it?
And as I say, this outdoor play area, which.
The adults that will be living in there.
Yeah.
Single adults that will be living.
Um, it, it's, it's the ground floor plan at the bottom next to what is the hive, I think. Yeah. Yes.
Chair, if I, if I may to, just to add to Catherine's, um, proposal, if she's, uh, open for it. Would be that the, uh, that the reduction of thirty, we would ask for a reduction of thirty four one-bedroom flats to twenty four one-bedroom flats and for, and for, yeah, and for the remaining to be two-bedroom flats and, and the two, three-bed self-contained flats.
Yes.
So a reduction in total flats of.
Ten.
Ten. A reduction of ten from, from thirty four to twenty four. From, from thirty four to twenty four.
Yes. Well, they're off a corridor, some of them are, the small ones are off that corridor, and if they took one away from either side of that corridor, which I think would be six, they will be able to get. A reasonable, not necessarily even a two bedroom, but one.
I think we could leave it there.
I was about to say, we don't worry about the sign, we ask for ten less, simple as that.
But yes, less, no, I won't tell them how many.
Yes.
Yes.
It is over development of flats. Yep, too small.
We okay on that, Chair?
There is a lift.
Vote.
Yeah.
Vote on it.
There is a lift.
It's not going to lift.
I think there is. Yes, there is. Uh, which is good. Okay, are we in, uh, Council Heather?
I thought you were going to say, are we in favour of that, I was just putting my hand up.
Yes, yes, please. And I think it's, Mrs Moore is as well.
Sorry. I might not vote for it anyway, so.
Oh, but you, you can vote against it.
Put me hand up.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was reading what was coming up next.
Okay. Um, so we're now down to number six, House Street, quarter to sixth House Street.
I must admit, the planning applications coming in are relentless. They are relentless. We get everything across Thanet and then we get our own ward.
Yeah.
Are you finding it relentless in your ward? It's relentless. Every week.
I don't know how they're planning the builders to do it, because there ain't no builders.
And how their builders find the materials.
And they have materials.
Delays and.
Yeah, custom materials.
And the cost is appalling.
There weren't any trees that list behind.
I've got a lot of work going on.
I was just going to say, I need.
Little marshing holes flipping out.
Um, so Council Austin, you pulled this in.
Yeah, this is just a concern that they've certainly had before about um U P V C windows, et cetera, and obviously.
I wonder about that, haven't we?
Been amended, yeah.
Yeah, it's been amended.
Been amended.
They, I don't know if they've taken their concerns into it all, but I'm sure so it's the.
Oh, yes, this one.
Um, before we gave the, the comment about the windows at the front.
Yeah.
So. So that's the previous plan, so if you've noticed the change here, I'll jump to the next one and the hallway and where you've got the storage area. Um, that would be changing, and then where you've got here is the new P V C.
Mm-hmm.
These are now changing to double glazed timber for the front.
Oh, fabulous.
After they are keeping new P V C at the back. And they have opened up a side of storage, this uh, storage bins, the kitchen area, and the living room area for the flat too.
Fine, so they were dressed up.
They, they, they dressed up.
Where does the back pop over?
Uh.
Is it in Cavendish Street?
I can't see it in my mind.
This, uh, but this, I can't see probably.
I've seen it. But I think it's a pack of.
I have no comment, yeah.
Seconded.
Um, all those in favour of no comment?
Could have thanked them for a minute.
Um, we, we're still allowing them to have P V C windows.
The back.
Fair enough. They're gonna have big fuel bills.
Oh, the lovely rule.
But.
For what?
I think if fuel bills keep going, well, buildings with no windows.
Yeah.
They'd be blocking them up.
Yeah.
Well, the window tap.
Yeah, the window tap.
There's some.
Um.
The Royal.
The Royal Fifty One Half Grade. There's a little parcel top.
It's the gap at the side of the wall in between that and the gallery, it's gonna be.
Built in.
But it's built in, and there's gonna be a mess in it on the top of the wall.
Hmm.
I'll show you. Yeah.
It's obviously, uh, wood and this.
Lining.
Talk with squeaky.
I'll just show you the artist's design with the walls. So that's, that's it, it's interesting. That's the track of it.
Oh, bloody.
That took me back rather.
It's bulking, obtrusive within the conservation area, Chair, that's fine.
Yes.
Totally forwarded design of the current building, out of character.
Exactly.
Out of totally out of character. Sorry, Mr Thorley, thank you.
Yeah. Is it Thorley?
Yes.
Whatever you're proposing, I'm seconding it, Council Orban.
And not only that, those two electric shoes here are illegal.
It might don't need to be barking out by the side of it.
What?
I'll propose that, Chair, sorry, quick, next move down.
I'm thinking.
It's okay.
I think if it wasn't so high.
We're back to the whole thing again about we welcome, you know, residential in the town centre, you know, we welcome anything that actually would, I think.
Yeah, it's not just.
Just so obtrusive.
Yes, that could just.
Because it listed top, didn't it?
But look how it, look how it, is that.
No, it listed.
Those are the buildings.
It's not really.
Yeah.
No, it can't be, because planning designers position the application, then the exception of the building application.
This can't go through, it's gonna. I don't think it's listed, is it?
No, it can't be, there would have been a separate, two separate applications, we only have one.
I think it's too high.
It's, there's too much of it.
It's too bulky, yeah.
I think Council.
Too bulky, it's too bulky, it's out of character with the conservation area. It detracts from the current building.
And it spoils the, the, the panoramic view of the seafront, doesn't it?
And you object, it's over, that, that's the things I've proposed that we, we object on.
Yeah.
And I second that.
So too bulky, it detracts from the existing building, which is not a building of great quality.
Doesn't matter, it's in the conservation.
It doesn't sit well within the conservation area now, it just doesn't, it looks, sticks out like a.
Out of character of the conservation.
I think if they coloured it indefinitely, we wouldn't be objecting so much.
Oh, you might not be, Council Mackinson, but I'm most certainly.
I don't believe it either, it's like, it's massive, it's just, it's, it's not high. Okay, do we have a second for Council Orban?
I've said it twice already, though, second.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. Um, can we vote, please, those in favour? Of what?
Can we give you that finish then?
Oh, no, um.
We're detecting it because.
It's big and bulky.
Big and bulky.
I'll vote for that.
Yeah, brilliant, lovely, thank you, next.
It's huge. Look at them little buildings, it's like David Miller. It's like a tacky sailing yacht.
What are they thinking?
No, it isn't.
It doesn't make it any worse.
It absolutely surprises me that someone of, of, for his boys, the experience, would not have come into Thanet District Council for pre-application advice. And they haven't done that because they're charged for it.
Yeah.
They wouldn't have agreed that, no pre-application advice.
They're actually wasting money, the defenders, because they're gonna have to go back and.
Belter in there.
Exactly.
But they may well have allowed for that.
It'll go through.
Probably.
The horrible red colour that they did before, that went through.
I hate red brick buildings, although I like this building. This is an old red brick building, not been.
Before we go on to this, can I just say to our all councillors, they're, they might need to call it in?
We can call it in, actually, yeah, we can call it in.
Right, Greg, oh, One Paradise, first floor extension to existing garage. Change of use to two story, two bedroom dwelling, it was a specific limited space. Okay.
It's not extending the area at all or adding anything, it's just change of use then?
Paradise is coming up quite a lot at the moment.
This, this was listed as One Paradise. The residents of One Paradise were always surprised because it wasn't their house. So a certain amount of entertainment has occurred and it's now been relist, there's a garage at the rear of One Paradise, which is under different ownership from the house.
Has this been up before? We seem to have a few of these.
My concern about is these completely out, the proposal, proposed design is completely out of character in what is reputedly Ramsgate Old Street.
That just looks weird.
It's just, it's just very odd to me, I, I don't see that the residents association have put in an objection.
They have rose to heights though, haven't they?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't have a difficulty in principle with there being something there, but in, in, in a historic street that's really trying very hard. To, to make the most of its historic credentials in the conservation area, to put that there, it just seems to me to be completely out of character.
It is out of character.
Sounds reasonable, yes. How do you gain access to it? Have you got to go through One Paradise to get?
Parachute.
Yeah, down the corner.
Yeah.
Down the corner.
It's good.
Where is it in the street now?
Yeah.
First street, no.
There, and where's number one? Is that in front of it?
You can't turn up in there.
So you can come up.
Yeah, what a countdown.
Cannon Road Con.
Oh.
It's a round way down to get to it, so you have to go down.
You go down from.
By the primary entrance.
Not in the street itself.
No, it's, it's around the back of it, it's round.
Somebody's back end.
On the corner.
Well, you can't say it interferes with the street scene.
No, I think so.
I think it's the best.
I just think the design is unique.
Not next, next to the leisure centre.
That is inappropriate. That building.
Uh, I just think that, that two story building there, it has no character to it at all, it has, it has nothing, it has nothing.
It's, it's.
Conservation.
It's a historic area, there's lots of, there's lots of, of historic buildings all round it.
Mustn't lose the fact that in the cons, it has to enhance conservation.
Doesn't enhance the area.
Doesn't enhance it, not in my opinion.
Um, it is, it is backlands development.
I don't know, I think it's better than what was there before.
And it is next to the leisure centre.
I know where it is.
I won't say another one.
Better than, you know, I expect than what, than what was there before, but is it good enough to be in that area? The answer is no, so they've got to go and think again, haven't they? I propose, we welcome, we welcome the development of this small area, but we.
But with a better design.
Yeah, but the, the present design does nothing to enhance the nature of this.
Conservation area.
Conservation area.
Seconded. All those in favour?
Yeah.
I'm again, yes. Go, 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 go.
I'm voted, then, take me hand down quick, you know.
All right. Two again. Because I think if that drawing was coloured in a bit better, I think it would look better. So where they're going.
Excuse me, Chair.
Uh, eighty two pin.
You're young.
Hmm?
You're young.
A bit ironed. I've been going to bed early, it's too hot though to sleep.
I know, it's too hot.
Up at three.
I know, it's horrible, I'm doing the same.
Be, I've been reading. It's a nice thing to do at that time.
It's not writing on the wall then.
So can we see, uh, eighty two pin street there?
Ah.
Oh, it's that shop?
Well, is that the nice, um.
Furniture shop.
Simple objection to the P V C windows, isn't it?
Oh, great, yeah.
We, we're back to the old T D C need to update because we recognise, uh, having lived in a grade two listed building with ractly windows. Uh, there is only so much you can do to stop those windows from being a, 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 a massive source of heat loss.
Yeah, okay.
What we've got is this piecemeal where it's coming in individually, and what we actually need is T D C, again, we've said again, to actually review their, their policy.
This is actually in the conservation area, that is opposite the con.
But it's still there, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's not conservation, is it, so?
Well, I would hate to see U P V C windows overlooking the conservation area, you know, and there are modern designs.
If you can get them to move the conservation area over to that bit, I might agree with you.
Look, there are, there are, there are, we don't have to put tacky U P V C windows in these historic buildings, whether they're in the conservation zone or not. There is a whole range of modern materials that look exactly like wooden sash windows that are better than U P V C and.
Were they made of?
Haven't, there, there's aluminium versions, there are, there are plastic versions that, that look like that.
Plastic.
It is, but these, you know.
But they're different.
The point is, we, yet again, we've got another building that wants U P V C in, and we're making a decision with no backup of a policy, and the policy needs to change to help people with historic buildings. I'm totally for double glazing going into historic buildings.
Yeah.
I lived in one, uh, you know, and we couldn't even put, what they suggest is internal double glazing, which absolutely wrecks the inside, the look of the inside of a historic building. So I'm with you, Pat, but there are, there are versions of this, so, you know, I support double glazing, I'll even support plastic windows going in there that look like sash windows. Uh, but we need a policy that, that makes it simple, is much easier for us to make a decision.
Council Huxley is trying to say something.
We suggest that they put in double glazed wooden windows, sash windows.
So you want to suggest?
Yes.
Double glazed wooden sash windows.
Wooden sash windows. What's on the question is also, what are the other buildings around it? If the other buildings around it have all got plastic windows and they'll just say, wow, they've got plastic windows.
Yes, I can't.
That's the problem.
Yeah. And so, yeah, so.
Council Orban is correct. We need a policy, either by T D C or in our neighbourhood plan.
Hmm. Yeah, and, and I don't think even in our neighbourhood plan, we can insist on, um, having.
We can have T D C pass it.
Yeah, no P V C.
Um, I, I think we're kind of losing a thing here, in that, um, legislation is laid down by government. And uh, T D C can't challenge the legislation of government in relation to listed buildings and what's an offence and what isn't. That, that has to be, that has to be done by government, and I understand that government are looking at this issue because of the climate change. Um, that is, that is taking place, and that's something that is for discussion. Um, I understand as well that most councils, including Thanet, uh, are in, are in talks with the government office concerning these issues, especially places like ours, we've got tonnes of listed buildings.
And heritage.
And conservation, well, yeah, uh, what's it called now? Uh, Napt, no.
It's English Heritage, isn't it? Is it English?
Uh, no, it's change.
Historic England.
Uh, Historic England, that's it, so, um, but I will go, I, I totally, I'll, I'll second Council, uh, Huxley's recommendation.
Which was?
Um, wooden double glazed windows.
Some match.
Double glazed glassing.
Interestingly, I mean, I didn't know this, I mean, we don't know enough about this, that what's come out of the climate emergency is we actually have a, have a man on the climate emergency who I happen to know, Michael Foley, who says there's a lot of really good advice in. English Heritage, Heritage England, whatever it's become, and that's another problem if you own a historic, if you move into and own a historic building, you don't know where to look for advice. So part of a policy, if T D C developed a policy or we developed a policy, would be pointing people into the direction where they could get advice on what to do in historic buildings. Because I think things are moving along because of the climate change.
Sorry, I, I have to say, if you, when you solicit or buy a listed structure, you are advised by your, by your solicitor, it's your building. And, and then you know where to go, you go to the council, if you've got a brain, you, you, you would do it, if you've got no brain, you will just carry on.
I sort of disagree, because, because we went to the council, but what the council don't give you is advice, and that advice comes from somewhere like Historic England or English Heritage, uh, who do have the advice.
But they will point you in that direction.
No, they didn't actually, just.
The conservation officers didn't help.
No.
Oh, no way.
Performing, you fill out planning application in to change the colour of your door, most people don't.
Have we voted?
Can we, the other panelists, please, Chair?
Yeah, what was saying? Um, yeah, Councilor Huxley's, I was second. Timbered, obvious windows.
Councilor Orban seconded it ages ago.
Those in favour?